Hi. Everybody seems to be having a really good time. I don't know if we should get started or not. But it's a good group, right? So, um, let's see. The first item on the agenda is pledge of allegiance. Who hasn't, uh, Charlie? Would you like to do it?
I would.
Okay.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and we'll now go to introductions. Shall we start with our new alternate? Are you the person who's will be coming?
Uh, I guess for today, I'm a sub, but eventually I will be the full representative. I will be. Uh, so my name is Vivian Brannan of the city of El Cerrito. I'm sending in for Janet Bilbas today, but Janet and I will be switching responsibilities at the city of Dublin probably by the end of the summer. So I'll be overseeing all the senior center and senior service.
You mean El Cerrito?
In El Cerrito, yes. Yes.
Vicki Waisowski, City of San Pablo. Mallory Brush, A.C. Transit.
Marissa O'Neal, Contra Costa County Advisory Council on Aging.
Janet Abelson, West County Consumer.
Charlie Anderson with Western Contra Costa Transit.
Michael Dowjelley, West County Participant.
Deanna Perry, Tri-Delta Transit. West County?
Pelo Smith, East County Paratransit Rep.
You said West County.
Sharon Kakey, East County Paratransit Rep.
I need to make a correction. I apologize. I think I have my directions mixed up. Thank you for pointing that out to me. I am East County Participant.
They're all good. Okay, and why don't we go now to Peter?
Peter Engel, CCTA Staff.
Fredos Jahan, CCTA Staff.
Karen Langenfelter from Mount Diablo Adult Ed, Adult Disability Program.
Is there anyone else? Is that it?
Yeah. That's Beverly Smith, my wife and detective.
Thank you for being here. You got us in the door, right?
Janet, maybe I should point out to Vivian that according to Janet Bilbas, you're covering for her today and will be from now on.
Oh, no.
That's what she said in her email.
And with that, we will move on to public comments on items not on the agenda. I don't have any slips. Are there any members of the public who would like to speak on an item that's not on the agenda? Not seeing any. We will move on. Uh, the next item is the summary of actions from March 20th. And are we calling it a summary of action from here on out? We are, right? Okay.
That's the official term.
Okay, so do we, we do approve this, though?
Yep.
Okay.
I have to speak to this.
Okay.
For some reason, Michael Hoppy, instead of my name, I would imagine that's just a typo where it says news to share. Uh, I was the one who informed the council that the California Teachers Association was here.
Okay. Any other corrections? So, um, is there a motion with that correction?
I'll make the motion.
Okay. And is there a second?
Slight.
Okay, we have a double second? We're well seconded. Okay, um, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposition or abstention?
I abstain, Mallory.
Oops, I'm sorry.
Mallory.
Mallory.
Abstain.
Okay, so one abstention. Motion carries with one abstention. So now then, we will move on to the next item, which is a presentation by Hireable. Am I saying that right?
Hireable.
Hireable, okay. Regarding collaboration opportunities, and this is for information only.
Matt, maybe I, maybe I can, well, hey, Josh is here.
Josh, we're out of town.
Josh, no, Josh actually brought up having these fine folks come and give this presentation today. We learned a little bit about it with our subcommittee when we looked at the operator claims and thought it was a good opportunity for some of the agencies and operators here, possibly. So, um, Josh, if you have a little bit more you want to say about it, and then we can start the presentation.
Sure. Well, these good people, that's subject to, no, I'm kidding. They're the best of people. But with that, no, when, when we do the claims, oftentimes we ask, you know, so what are, what are current unmet needs systemically to help our providers do their, do the great work that you do? In the DD field right now, through a hybrid of just, I don't know, the clouds parted and there are some new opportunities out there. We have a group of folks in Contra Costa County and Alameda that formed a consortium, or is that the, basically a group that, that's really trying to push the envelope in regards to helping folks bring worth and, and the employees. So, take it away, guys.
Sure. Yeah, Will Sanford with Futures Explored. So the three groups that are the primary members of Hireable are Futures Explored, East Bay Innovations, which represents Alameda County, and Contra Costa ARC that are here. And our goal is really to increase employment opportunities for folks with developmental or intellectual disabilities. And one of the things we've really done is gotten together and put up Hireable as a website and information source for folks. And part of what we're doing is really pushing out and doing a series of different ways for our guys to engage. Historically, folks with intellectual development disabilities have been employed at Safeway, Janitorial, Landscape, et cetera. We've really started to push the envelope on that and getting folks employed into more traditional employment opportunities, so office assistants, office work related to that. And we actually have a group through East Bay Innovations who are doing an internship for BARTS in their maintenance yard. And all three of the gentlemen who are doing their internships just got certified as forklift drivers. So they went through, became certified to do that as a pathway to hopefully a full-time employment with BART. The state of California has allowed us to provide support for folks financially, up to $10,400 a year, as a paid intern. So we have folks who can become paid interns and go out there and do it. So we're running a number of opportunities to go do that. The BART is one. We're also working with the state of California with an internship program through something called SB 644, where the internship could lead to employment. Those are going to be in office assistant type positions at this point, but we're hoping to expand that to, you know, Department of Government or GSA. Yeah, whatever they do, as far as that. So we're trying to expand, I don't know, it's one of the make it up to go on, DMV and other things. So right now, and Karen is one of the folks that we're working with with the Project Search, and she actually has a group she's going to talk about who are actually right across the courtyard.
Courtyard. Right across the courtyard.
Hello, everybody. I'm Karen, a little shorter than you, just a hair. Karen Langenfelter, and I'm the Program Coordinator of Adults with Disabilities Program with Mount Diablo Adult Ed and the Coordinator of the Project Search at the Embassy Suites, right across your little atrium here. We started on January 17th. We have six interns with intellectual and developmental disabilities, and they are interning for the, for eight months at the Embassy Suites in three different departments. We have office assistants, we have food and beverage, people working in hospitality. It's been exciting and incredible, and these are paid internships, which is phenomenal. So they're getting paid through the regional center, through ABX 21, right? Which is phenomenal. So at the end of their, they'll rotate through three internship sites at the Embassy Suites. They'll graduate with a certificate, three letters of recommendation, and throughout that time, they're also getting, we have two skills trainers, and I have a credential teacher there that's there all day long, helping them train on these, on these particular jobs and preparing them for employment. It's been so successful that not only has the Embassy Suites kind of embraced it, they also put in for a grant to help support the Project Search program for $5,000 through Hilton, and they got it. And they're going to be buying technology to help our interns be more successful, so they can have Chromebooks, so they can do their resumes and, and do their letters of resignation that they do and their letters of application every time they rotate between the different departments. So it's very exciting, and there's so much development that can happen in Contra Costa County. There are a lot of large businesses that could host a Project Search site, and it is typically a nine-month training program for up to six interns, could be all the way up to 12 interns. We're focusing on six. And any business that has at least like 150 to 200 employees, which is a number of businesses in our county, could host a Project Search site. And we provide the educational component. We have a credential teacher there doing soft skills education, resume development, as well as some of the skills training. And then Contra Costa ARC provides two skills trainers to work day-to-day to make sure that they're getting all the training. Our interns are getting all the training they need to be successful in the departments. It looks like at this point, we're going to end on August 31st, that at least three of our interns are probably going to be hired by the Embassy Suites. In fact, they can only wait till they're finished so they can get a position there.
So the other thing that we've done, especially with our adult ed partners, is look for opportunities for our folks to get certifications that would allow them to go into other jobs. So, right now, we have Castro Valley adult that is doing a dietary aid position certification, which means that our folks who then get hired on and work in a number of skilled nursing and, you know, or other senior living facilities or other facilities to go do that. Karen's looking at one to do a personal care assistant, which means that I could hire folks who've got trained to be able to come and do it. So if there are needs in the transit area where our folks could really learn, we look for things that can be very complex, but routine jobs. So, could be complex. Our best example from Project Search is there's a young lady in Children's Hospital in Cincinnati who does all their surgery kits. The surgery kit could be 600 or 500 different pieces, scalpels and all different, all those pieces, puts them in the right order for a right-handed doctor, a left-handed doctor, based on what the surgery is, what the kits look like. And she has one of the lowest air rates that they have. Very complex, but once she's learned how to do it, can do it over and over again. So things that really are, in a sense, routine can be very complex. We can train folks up to go do that. So that's one of the things that right now, we have the guys at BART was what East Bay Innovations is doing different things, really looking for folks to be able to do that and do that well. So, I think Josh's view was that there may be opportunities in the stream of folks who may have that need, and it could be an opportunity for us to take a look at and partner with and develop some skills and a new employee base, given the fact that roughly 85% of our folks are unemployed. We have a huge unemployment. We are probably the single largest pool of new employees that anybody has. So with that, we can answer questions.
I just want to say we're looking at developing a data entry clerk position. A lot of our folks on the spectrum really enjoy doing data entry and the repetitive work, so we're, I'm working with our business director at our career tech ed department to put together that program, as well as an office assistant program, which would segue nicely into what the state of California hires and would kind of address their guidelines and skills necessary to obtain that position. So yes, any questions? Yes, too?
I have one that I hope is not controversial. I am very supportive of the minimum wage, and in my city, when we hire interns, including like, um, high school students, we, no matter who it is, we pay the minimum wage. And I'm wondering if your folks, if you happen to be, if they happen to be doing a job in a jurisdiction, usually it would be a local jurisdiction, if that kind of ordinance is in, in fact, if they, if they're getting minimum wage?
Yeah.
I'm asking a question on behalf of the, of the interns, not the...
Right. We actually have a group that's about to start, an internship with the Public Health Department in Oakland, in Alameda County. So they've been doing the Oakland minimum wage. We have two individuals right now with our Film and Media Program who are in San Diego, which is, whose minimum wage is $11.50. So we basically adjust to whatever the, as well as including, you know, the California sick leave and all, I mean, if this calculation was any more complex, I think I'd need a PhD in math, but you know, it's not, yeah, it's like to track all that, but yes. So the, our assumption is it's minimum wage. It has to technically fit into what they call competitive integrated employment. So it has to be in a location that would be considered to be integrated, so that the workforce that they are working with primarily don't have disabilities, that it's, you know, competitive, which would be at least minimum wage for, as an intern as far as that, and likelihood of leading to some sort of potential employment. Now, we do have folks who are in the exploration point of their life, where they're trying to figure out, gee, I really think I want to be a rocket scientist, but yeah, that PhD in astrophysics might be a little tough, but there's other things I could do along the way. And so we try and figure out what's the right fit. So some people are doing more exploration, some people, my folks who are coming out of Film Media are really looking for, they need experience. They need to be able to show, here's all the things I've done as a filmmaker, as an editor, as whatever, to really build their ability to go out. I mean, that's a resume for Film Media is, show me what you've done. It's not a piece of paper, it's like, high-tech stuff.
Are you scheduling like six interns all at the same time, or?
The Project Search model is six to 12 interns, but they are typically spread out throughout the business. Like here, they're, they're doing, we actually have one at the Doubletree in Pleasanton, and there's someone who's in the front desk, there's someone who's doing behind that, back of the house, there's someone in the laundry, there's someone doing general maintenance, and there's someone in the kitchen. So, they're spread out, they get together, they come together first thing in the morning and work generally as a classroom with a teacher, but after that, they're really out in the workforce, working with other folks to learn the jobs.
But the teacher is on-site?
All day.
All day, but then rotating amongst...
Correct. As long as, and with the skill, there's, so there's two, it's a one to three ratio for support, so it's the skills trainer, two skills trainers, and then plus the instructor. So technically, we have three staff there all day from 9:00 to 3:30, and it's Monday through Friday, 9:00 to 3:30. And that first hour, as Will was saying, sorry, is that 9:00 to 10:00 is classroom instruction. On, they do a lot of vocabulary for the workplace, dealing with social situations in the workplace, role-playing, and then in the end of the day, from 3:00 to 3:30 is the wrap-up, where they all come and they talk about, you know, what went well in their day and what was the challenge and how did they deal with it.
Definitely the city of El Cerrito Recreation Department would be interested in doing this.
Okay, and that'd be, again, Contra Costa ARC would probably be the partner on that side. And we've sort of, you know, we go around and we'll make the moving target for what makes the most sense, related to that. When we do it in the hospital setting, a lot of the classroom work is actually related to codes that come over the radios, that Mr. Smith, blah, blah, blah. That actually means something to the folks in the, in the deal, because with their badge, they're actually look like a hospital employee. So someone who comes in for accreditation can literally walk up and ask them any question that they should know. And so our guys have to go through a very intensive program to do that. So, that's a lot of the support in the internship, and our goal is to sort of fade back so that folks really can get that job. The other one is, once someone's hired, they will have an employment special or job coach with them for as much as they need. So it can start off very intensely and then will fade down. It will vary typically based on change in job tasks, change in supervisor, change in something at home. Those are usually my major three, as far, I used to say love life, but you know, that's the other one that's out there. And everyone said, well, that's the same for everybody. I said, I know, but our guys tend to go further off the rails than most of us. So we need a little more support. But, so there's always going to be support for our folks in the community, so it's cool.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Yes, I have a question for them. What, what plans, outreach plans do, does the state have for securing intern positions like this in private corporations? It's one thing in the hospitality industry and in the medical industry. Those are the two that we know that are more encouraging of this type of apprenticeship, but corporate America is the one I think needs to be cracked.
Absolutely would agree with that. I mean, I think in the state sense, right now, the lead job developer for us is Joe Xavier, who is the Director of the Department of Rehabilitation, and he's, he's a state-level appointee for that position. And he's been out, outreach into other departments, including the Department of Education and a whole series of other, DMV and those. Corporate, we go after, and a lot of it's based on, you know, my guess is, and we got enough people here, at least two of you know someone who has a significant disability and/or autism, based on the one in six. So that means that almost every corporation or every major player knows somebody. And so, it's becoming much more mainstream. The challenge has been, on the corporate side, is employment is a grassroots, low-level employment. The CEO of Walmart, which is a 250,000 employee company, could say, yes, let's go do it, but it's those line managers that we have to get to. And that's really, you know, you have to open the door, but we really have to do it locally, because employment's all about the local, to make that thing. I, we hear, we push it out all the time, and we try and recognize companies that are doing the right thing to help build momentum.
But do you have plans and a program designed to reach these middle managers to encourage them to participate in the program?
That is part of what we're doing with the Hireable, Hireable campaign right now, is really aimed at how do we get, do outreach to our middle managers. And so we're starting to do a series of videos related to folks who've been both employed by and hired by folks, to really talk about, here's what I was worried about, here's what happened, you know, give a success story. Visual's the best way to do it. We're working on that plan right now, where we have a meeting in about two weeks to sort of do the next series of steps. So, yes.
Go ahead.
I volunteer at Kaiser in Delta Fair, and even though that's volunteer and that's different from intern, I wanted to congratulate you, because this adds a new dimension. In my volunteer work, I do work with interns that come in, and I see that this is a different perspective on it, and it gives me something that I can continue to look for to make sure, you know, that the organization that I volunteer for is perhaps dealing with issues like this with their interns. And I'm really glad to see what you're doing. Thank you.
I mean, Project Search really was, grew out of the hospital settings, primarily because most people go into a hospital are there because of disease or sickness or disability, and they said we should represent that. And so that's really the start. And we have folks who are doing very, very well. We have a gentleman in Sacramento who makes $25 an hour, 35 hours a week, with benefits, he's living in his own apartment. That's our, I mean, so, we're getting there, but it's, you know, it is uphill both ways.
I figured I'd make a quick statement and then ask a question, because I thought I heard something pretty funny, and, but true. So, yet, when we're thinking about the types of places that our community members can fit in and do value-added work, I know one of our providers opened up a very large call center, that's routine but complex, any sort of data entry. Then the question had to do with that, having seen firsthand how, when people come into a workplace and love what they do and be there, how it changes the culture, did I hear that folks on the spectrum come in and really love data entry?
Absolutely, some, yeah.
Data entry.
It's like anything, there's no absolutes in any, in any disability or any group of humans, right? We all have different likes. But yes, there are, we actually have a program at our adult center, Loma Vista Adult Center in Concord, it's called TOPPS, and we serve folks on the spectrum who previously diagnosed with Asperger's, high functioning autism, and many of them enjoy computer time, they enjoy the repetitive computer work. And that's why I'm developing the data entry clerk, because many of them would prefer to work in the back office, not have to interact, they're not comfortable interacting with the public, but once given a task and related to the computer and able to do it, would be extremely fast at it and accurate and comfortable. And it's, it's just a perfect setting, actually, it's a perfect description for a lot of the folks that we serve. It's a comfortable place. And over the years, we have people, we've had private companies come and approach us, and we've had folks go out and enter medical files into the computer systems and do some data entry work out of our TOPPS program. And they've been very successful and incredibly accurate, more accurate and more focused than other people that they have brought in from the community to do the same work.
I have another, I have another question. How do people get in, so the, so I'll call it the internship program, and how do people get into the program that enables them to get into the internship program?
Right now, any regional center-funded vendor can actually do the internship program. It's primarily been the employment folks. So in Contra Costa County, it's Contra Costa ARC and Futures Explored are the two major ones, although the Adaptive Learning Center has just become a support employment provider. East Bay Innovations, Contra Costa ARC, and Futures also do Alameda County. So it's a growing number, so there's a push out there to go do it. It's a lot of work and people have to understand the technical side, so we tend to be the ones more likely to do it, but any day service and/or even residential provider could do it.
I guess what I'm wondering about is, what about somebody, I, I'm thinking of a particular person, actually, and I don't know if that person has been a client of the regional center, but I would guess so. And, um, do they have to be, what does their status have to be at the moment they're going into the internship, is kind of what I was wondering?
Right. Currently, they have to be regional center clients and also eligible for Department of Rehab Services. Because the collaboration, if you look at just, and I'm focusing on Project Search, Will is talking about employment in general and placing folks, so there's two different things we're talking about there. But if you're looking at, like, if I look at the Project Search model, regional center, Department of Rehab, Contra Costa ARC is the employment services portion, and then Mount Diablo Unified Adult Ed is the educational partner. So we are all partnered. We are now coming, we're just starting to promote the next rollout. Our next Project Search will launch at the Embassy Suites, October 2nd. So from May and June, we're sending out, through case managers and through Department of Rehab, through different agencies, flyers, where people can apply, they can come for an open house at the Embassy Suites on June 2nd. The process is, they fill out an application, their case manager gives us all the, sends us all the information we need in order for them to be eligible for Department of Rehab. They go through interviews with staff from the hotel, as well as the employment side, and then if they're selected, they begin the internship. Does that answer your question?
Somewhat, yeah. Can I ask a, a related question based on what you said?
Of course.
So if, do you, do they go through a process prior to the process, say, over at the Embassy Streets where they are taught some job skills to prepare them for that level?
So, we look at their resume. So everybody that applies, we look at their resume, they have to submit a resume, and we look at their job experience to see if they have prior job experience. Prior to starting, the Embassy Suites is usually a month or so out where we're getting their uniforms and spending time in the classroom, going through some of the basics of not only the system at the Embassy Suites for us, because that's our site, but also all the, all that's necessary to put, that goes into being an employee, right? And everything from behaviorally to communication on the workplace. Most of the folks that started our first internship had no work experience, but they came also with recommendations and references from either the program that they came from or other people in their lives. So just like anybody, we're hope, our hope is to give folks some training that have never had a lot of job experience before, but if they have, that's a bonus. But I can tell you that out of our last rotation, or our current rotation, excuse me, our current cohort, got to get my terminology, I think more than half have never worked before. They volunteered possibly, but they don't have any work experience. So it's major, I mean, we're talking full immersion right into the workplace with supports, and it's, it's been a learning curve, but all of our folks have been shining.
Are they a certain age range, or?
18 and older. Ideally, the Project Search model is 18 to 35. However, we can go beyond 35. We're looking at the adult model of it. This was designed originally for transition age, 18 to 22-year-olds, and school districts, K-12 school districts would partner with agencies that do employment services and stuff. But we're doing the adult model here in Contra Costa currently.
No, I see the one. The key one is, we've gone away from what I'll call readiness model, people get trained on how to go to work, to, let's get you in, off you go, and you go into the day, it's like everybody, it's like all of us have gone through, you know, you sort of have to go through and just go through and do it. And so it is a little bit of a challenge, so it really is pretty open. It's really a matter of that people have pretty good social skills is probably one of the stronger things that they need to be able to do. Can they at least, you know, interact relatively well? They may not communicate, they can use a communication device, they could be in a wheelchair, they could have other issues. At our group in the Hilton or the Doubletree, we actually have a little person in that, so we had to go through and come in with accommodations. She wanted to work in the kitchen. Okay, we need a rolling step stool that will lock, so when she stands on it, it's not going to slide around the floors. And that's what we do, make it happen.
And we have one young man who's never worked in a wheelchair, ever at the Embassy Suites, and they've done great, provided a lot of help for us in terms of, the Embassy Suites has provided some accommodations and worked with their staff to, to get him through the doors, right? Because if there isn't staff around or, because they don't have automatic openers and all that kind of stuff. So, yeah, it's been definitely a learning curve, but it's, it's open to anybody that really wants to work. And I think that's the key for me, is they have to have a strong desire to work and recognize that they're going to be doing a 9:00 to 3:30, Monday through Friday, for nine months. This is significant commitment. So that's what we're looking for.
Are there any more questions, Lori? Did you have one?
Oh, no.
Oh, okay.
Any, any? Peter?
Did I hear there was a minimum employer size that was required, or is it just more of a?
For Project Search there is, which is the six interns, but as far as any of the other paid internships, you could be three. It doesn't really matter, is, the question is, is it an opportunity for folks to get is it an opportunity for folks to get the experience that they need? So we've sent some folks in the film media world have gone into very small organizations. It's simply a way for us to, historically, internships had to be either with a not-for-profit and/or educational opportunity. Because of the paid piece of it, it now opens the door so we can go to corporations and, hey, you know, let these guys try it out. Because our biggest challenge is typically, not that they can't do the work, it's that they're not going to get by the first interview. They may get the first interview, but they're going to go like, hmm. But if they can get in there, do the internship and demonstrate, we actually have that. We do all the scanning for Department of Child Support Services. They've gone electronic? Well, they are, except for every application is filled out manually. So basically, within forty-eight hours, our guys scan it, quality control, and upload it into their system. It's a great job. Our guys did, you know, we had twenty-five folks fully employed when I was at its peak. So it's, you know, some of the people, if you read the, what the requirements for that job were, I'm like, I couldn't do that job. Fully compliant in all aspects of Microsoft Office. I'm like, they don't use Microsoft Office at all. It's really, you know, can you run a high-speed scanner? Can you, you know, keep it so it doesn't jam? Can you look and make sure that what's on the screen and what's on the paper look the same? And guess what? There's one document that is always flagged, and it is your driver's license because it's designed to not be copied. So it doesn't show up well. So that's the one document in every file that gets flagged. And you go through, that's as good a copy as we're going to get. On you go. So there's a lot of jobs that folks think are much more complex than they actually in reality are, the essential function to what someone has to do.
How do people get to the job site?
That's where you guys all come in. Access is one of our biggest challenges, is a huge challenge. I mean, Embassy Suites happens to be right by BART, which is awesome. The Doubletree that we're at is across from there, and there, the hotel actually has the shuttle for all of its employees, and the interns are considered employees, so they can be picked up within five miles. That's often one of the biggest barriers to employment for our folks, is how to really access transportation in a real way, whether it's public transit. The advent of Lyft and Uber for our folks who are not chair users actually has been a great opening of the doors because they're not dependent on the thirty-minute window. Uber and Lyft are pretty much, I'll pick you up, I'll get you there, you're done. And so those have been a challenge, but they're expected to get to and from.
What about people in wheelchairs?
Can we go with the paratransit?
Yes.
Because it's much more of a challenge. You have to have a bigger window to do it.
We use, yeah, Tri Delta. We have two people in Antioch, and coming from Antioch, two of our interns, and one is in a wheelchair. So Tri Delta essentially takes them to the Concord BART station, and then he can take BART from there on. But it is a huge, huge challenge. In fact, but Link is seen at the Embassy Suites now, picking up a different person during the day. But, I mean, it's a challenge, right? From all over the county, getting from one end of the county to the other and the handoff is extremely challenging. And that's a huge barrier to employment, right? Being able to get there, whether you're being dependent upon public transportation, and we all know how the time is, right? Because one goes long, you're waiting too long for this person, and it becomes, you're, then you end up being late. So it's a challenge.
Are things being done so that the job sites selected don't exclude people who do have problems getting around?
To the degree where those opportunities are there, yes.
It's like to say it, Uber and Lyft work for everybody that's not in a wheelchair is personally a reason to me not supporting, not for anybody. That's why, one of the reasons not to support them. There are other ones too, but the, because the more we, we say things like, it's okay, but even if it doesn't work for this or that group, then, then that sort of narrows the confines. And Uber and Lyft are a great example of something that's, from what I understand, working to destroy public transit as we know it, because they, it means that all those rides don't go on public transit, so the ridership gets slower, so the service area gets smaller. Is that right, Mallory? When you don't have as many riders, what happens? You recut, you reduce service on fixed route?
Or raise fares.
What?
Or raise fares.
Or raise fares. So, so there's a, you know, so that's, so it would seem like if you tried to, tried to encourage the use of employers, that in fact could be reached by, say, public transit, that it would be more to the goal of getting closer to full employment?
I mean, we run into challenges, I mean, absolutely. We always try and look at, how do we get people access to their community to the degree they can? But if you live in Far East County, I mean, you know, BART doesn't run everywhere. I mean, it's, it's a much more of a challenge. And we also typically look on the employment side, where does someone live, what their employment options really are. If you want people to be able to get to and access that. And we also clearly, you know, do a lot of shell-in ourselves with wheelchair vans, et cetera. So, yeah, it's, there is no perfect world out there. We have come a long way, as far as I would keep moving in the right direction. As far as that. Our challenge with employment is a thirty-minute window. Unemployment means that people either, they're typically about a half hour to forty-five minutes early, and they get picked up an hour after they've, because they, to make sure that they can cover their shift. So then, that's just our challenge. That's the world that we're trying to meet the employer need, all of those pieces at the same time. So, but here you.
Josh?
Just a random, technical-ish question. So you've already gone over the, for, if you're placing folks outside of Project Search, so you have one to two, maybe three different places, or even down to one, you've said the state will pay for an internship up to ten thousand four hundred as long as it's focused around skill building. What about things, I know interns typically have to fall under some sort of insurance and, and other benefit-like stuff. Who pays for that?
The, all of the work-related payment, workers' comp, FICA, all of those taxes can be covered underneath that. There's the allowance in this bill that allows us to partner. So if an employer says, I'm willing to pay half the salary and benefits, if you can pay the other half, we can make that work. So there's lots of ways to sort of work with that to actually expand how far the ten thousand four hundred goes. So we've had people do both of those. So, yeah, all the basic benefits are there. And our contract with, I mean, can, Public Health to do internships there, you know, where as an organization, we provide, you know, additionally insured coverage because we insure half the county as far as I can tell, based on what we do. We support about three hundred people, four hundred people in Contra Costa counties. So we're out and about, and people say, where are you? I'm like, I don't know. I have seven hundred folks that are in six or seven counties with a hundred and seventy staff, and I don't know what they're doing. But we, we cover most of it.
So who do you contact at the ARC for this then?
You would talk to Michelle Palmer at CSS Richmond and/or Michelle Turnz at CSS Antioch. Those are the two employment specialists. Or worst case is you send an email to Josh, and Josh will get us in touch with.
I don't have his email.
Really?
Yeah.
Oh, for.
A roster?
That's right. I should get that out.
Josh can always link you.
Yes, yeah. I mean, we do. Actually, hireable.org is a website which has the contact information on it too. Thank you, Josh, for our thing. Website. H-I-R-E-A-B-L-E.org. And there's a tab that has Contact Us, and it does it by area, so you can figure out who to go on it. And it's an email.
Pictures, video, there's great, it's a great resource. Check it out.
We're gonna.
It's running, growing. Absolutely.
No spare time.
Any other questions?
Been great.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Why don't we just, for the fun of it, go around and introduce ourselves quickly? Again, some people got here, I think, after we did that, and personally, I have a hard time with names anyway. So Sharon, could you start again with your introducing yourself? We'll just go around the table real fast. Some people weren't. I know, but some people weren't here. Uh-huh.
Deanna Perry, Tri Delta Transit.
Michael Doujeli, the western part of eastern Contra Costa County.
Charlie Anderson from western Contra Costa Transit.
Janet Abelson, West Contra Costa Consumer.
Rita Xavier, Contra Costa County Advisory Council on Aging.
Lori Reese Brown, City of Richmond, City Manager's Office.
Valerie Bresch, AC Transit.
Vicki Wysowski, City of San Pablo.
Vivian Brandt, City of El Cerrito.
Debbie Toth, I forgot my name. Provider Organization Choice in Aging.
Josh Sullivan, Contra Costa Didi Council.
My name is Bill Trin. I'm a Didi Council Board, and I'm a rider in Central County.
Pete, oh, I'm sorry. Where, I, Peter, you want to go next?
Peter Engle, CCTA staff.
For those Jahan CCTA staff.
Okay, great. And there will be no quiz. But, okay, so next we go on to expiration of member terms. And there's an attachment which is on page... Five?
Nine.
Nine. Okay. Oh, that's not on... Oh, the topic is, but there's also a list, right?
Ten, page ten.
Page, page ten? Well, the one I was meaning, meaning to point us to is page five. Sorry. It, it shows everybody's term and who everybody is and everything. And so you can, it's a chart. You can see it pretty nicely there, but the agenda item itself is on nine. And, okay. Do you want to address this, Peter, or is?
See if I can get some slack in this thing here. Yeah, so this is our annual, so to your terms, they're staggered, so every year we go through this, where some member expiration, term expirations come on June 30th. So, as Chair pointed out, on page ten, there's, there's four people whose terms are ending June thirt, June 30th of 2017. Janice Abelson, Michael Doujeli, Rita Xavier, and Michael Hoppe. And three of the four are here, and our, our typical routine is that we would see if those folks want to continue, and if so, then there would be action taken by the full PCC to have them continue. Michael, who's not here, he's part of Independent Living Resource. He hasn't been here for a while. Claude has expressed interest in taking that, so I'm in contact, or will be in contact if I haven't been, bad memory, with their supervisor to see if, if Claude is interested in taking back over that seat on behalf of ILR. So we'll, we'll figure that out, whether it's Claude or whether Michael continues and, and who the alternate would be once I make that connection.
Okay. And how about the other ones?
The other ones are all here, I think.
So they just indicate whether or not they're?
They want to continue.
Interested?
Uh-huh.
Okay. So we just.
It's, it's you and Michael Doujeli and Rita.
Yep. Okay. Okay. I think it's yes on all accounts.
Okay. So then we just take a, a motion and action from the full committee to have them continue.
Is there a motion?
That motion?
Who was talking? I couldn't, oh, Debbie, okay. And who's the second?
Debbie Toth.
Okay, Sharon's the second.
Sharon's.
All in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any objections, any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously, and then could we make a motion to indicate our approval of whichever one you, however you work it out, or do we have to do that a different way?
Yeah, I mean, technically Independent Living Resource is the agency, so.
Okay.
Unless they want to, you know, not continue to sit or have a representative here, then, you know, we would look for a new social service agency to take their spot. But I think whoever they recommend would, would be fine, since the term is starting over in July anyway. If they want to recommend Claude to that, then that would be fine.
Could we just say that the person will be from that agency?
Yes.
I don't think we have agency slots in that section.
Right. So they, whoever the agency.
But we could, but we have at least one. Where are you from, Claude? Oh, so you're a different agency. Okay, so.
Same agency.
Same agency as Michael.
Okay.
Other Michael.
I'm a little confused. No wonder I'm confused. Okay, so how do we leave, how do we do this?
We'll just get there. We'll just, if they're, if they want to continue having a representative here, we'll just find out who that is, and, and then they'll come the next meeting.
And get approved then?
Yeah.
Okay. Josh?
Two quick questions. One would be, could we potentially just ask for Claude to be Michael's, because you're part of the same agency, you can be the alternate and still represent the agency. And then in that light, I know that our central county writer would like, he's going to pursue eventually a passenger.
Okay.
Class A, but in the interim, could, could I have him listed as my alternate?
Yeah, we would just need something in writing from whoever your agency is.
Okay.
And I know since he's on the board, you know, he could probably just say he wants to be your alternate.
Those are the ones we interview, right? So he could just get interviewed.
We just interview the consumers. We don't interview the agencies.
Oh, not as a.
Yeah, so.
Oh, I got it.
So if he applies to be a consumer representative, then we would interview him. We also currently have an application, so we'll probably want to, if he's interested in that, we can do that as early as the next meeting. Josh? Yeah, because the requirement is that he attend one meeting, which he's here today. So if he applies, then we were going to have the, the committee meet, because we already have one application, and we can just do them both, and then he can.
Well, in that case, Mr. Trin, offer retracted. You are not my alternate.
Okay. So then that would fill one of our, from, you're from Central County?
Central County Rider, yeah.
Perfect, because we need those.
Yep.
That's great. Yay. Okay. Is there anything else on this item?
Nope.
That was easy. Okay. So next, we'll move on to item number seven, which is a presentation on Measure J funding for transportation programs for seniors and people with disabilities.
So I, at the last meeting, I thought this would be a good time with the, approving the claims tonight, too, that we just do for a lot of, a lot of new people on the council, just kind of what Measure J is with respect to transportation programs for seniors and people with disabilities and, and how it all works. Do I need to do something here?
Is there a thing going on up there?
Need to push a function key?
It's on there, but it's not on there.
One of the screens isn't on.
Is the screen on?
No.
No.
Oh, here it goes. No HDMI.
So nothing, and where's the switch? I guess it's picking it up. Is there a power switch?
I don't think so.
I remember there used to be a two-point switch.
Maybe it's got the same problem as the button on the door.
The button on the door doesn't work either? I did already.
You did?
Yeah. We do somewhere. But if they're, they should, if that's not working, is it on at all?
No. Oh, there it went. Maybe. Michael, did you get the front door, the door working? Oh. Maybe it's not open. I can't tell.
Well, maybe you won't get a presentation.
Well, can, are we, can we, is it up there?
No, it's not up there either.
Oh, it's not. Can you just do it verbally?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I'll just do it verbally. So who we are, so. So who we are, so the Contra Costa Transportation Authority is basically two agencies. We're the congestion management agency, and then we're the sales tax authority. So in 1998, Measure C was approved by the voters. Back then, it was a 50% requirement to pass a half-cent sales tax, and I think it was for 25... It was 20 years. And that expired in... There you go. Oh, was it off? Yeah. The power was off. So I said who we are. So Measure C was a 20-year half-cent sales tax. There was an expenditure plan associated with that. That expired in 2009. And in 2004, we went back on the ballot for Measure J, which was basically an extension of Measure C, half-cent sales tax for 25 years. And at that time, the law had changed, and it required a two-thirds vote. We got a 71%, so we got well more than we needed for that. And that sales tax that we currently have, Measure J, will be in effect until the year 2034. And it'll provide approximately $2.7 billion. That's inflated dollars for the entire program, the expenditure plan, which included things like the Caldecott Tunnel 4-4, finishing up the highway extension in East County, Highway 4, E-BART. Those kind of things are all part of Measure J. And there's also Program 15 is the one that you're going to be making a recommendation on tonight. That is the main countywide transportation for seniors and people with disabilities. It gets, over the life of the 25 years, it's a 5% allocation. It started in the first year, in fiscal year 2010, with a 3.5% allocation, and it ends in 2034 with a 5.9% allocation. So it gets a 0.1% increase every year, over each year of the plan. I think this year, it's at 4.6%. So I wanted to show you here... Let me go back here. So this is the front cover of the Measure J expenditure plan. You can find this on our website. It's been amended a couple times. There's a process that we have to go through that's quite extensive, involving getting the majority of the cities with the majority of the population in the county to agree that the amendments are okay. The Board of Supervisors has to approve it, and then it comes back to our board, and then they have to approve it. And then the expenditure plan can be amended. We did go through an amendment regarding the paratransit program 20, which is associated with two parts of the county, West County and Central County, and I'll get into that for a minute. Program 20 was initially supposed to be an expansion of paratransit services, so new services. The problem was when Measure J started in 2010, 2009, 10, we were just at the very beginning, or a little bit into the Great Recession. Sales tax funds had dropped extensively. Paratransit operators were looking at having to cut services because of the funds that they had to support those. And so we went back for an amendment to say, you know, in a time when financial resources are down, and you're going to be in a position where you have to cut services, it doesn't make sense to cut them and then add something new when you should just be able to use that money to keep supporting the services you had until such time when revenues are back to where they're supposed to be, and you can be in a position to start adding new services. So this is... And I don't expect you to read that on the right-hand side. What I've done is I've taken basically each of the paragraphs, and I've kind of expanded them there. The first paragraph has to do with funds could be used for both ADA and non-ADA services. The second paragraph has to do with recipients that receive Measure C funding are guaranteed, as long as they're providing those, continuing those services, to receive the same percentage that they received under Measure C, which was 2.97%. That's a countywide number, not each operator got 2.97%. And when I say that percentage, what that is, that's a percentage of the total sales tax. So if we received $80 million in total sales tax funds for Measure J in one year, then we would multiply that by 2.97%, and that's how much would go into the countywide program. As you go on down, it talks about how that, what would be 3.5% starting in Measure J, and that 1%, 0.1% increase is divided up amongst the county. So West County gets a certain percentage, Central County gets a certain percentage, Southwest County and East County all get a certain percentage. And their increment that it goes up is a portion, that same percent portion of that 0.1%. So it's kind of complicated, but I have a spreadsheet that's this big that helps me calculate all this stuff every year. There's the East County. It talks about what the eligible uses are of this particular pot. And then there could be additional funding from each of the regional transportation planning committees. So the subregions of the county has kind of an overall fund account. It's called Subregional Transportation Needs. If there was a real important need for a particular subregion for paratransit funds, they could request that that RTPC provide some of those funds to them. I don't think that's happened at this point. And that would be a decision that would... Or a recommendation from that RTPC to the authority. It would have to come from the RTPC to the authority for that to happen. And then there are certain criteria that it would have to meet in order for that to happen. So I want to talk a little bit about what we've seen to date in the measure. So the orange line, which should be... The bottom orange line should have dots on it, but they're all blended together. That's the 2.97% under Measure C. So you can see there, you know, towards the end of the measure, it really dropped, really dropped off. That's when the recession started. The orange line above that is actually what we allocated. What happened early in Measure C is the money was collected for a few years, but couldn't be allocated until there was a paratransit plan in place. Took a few years to get that plan in place. And so there was this reserve that had kind of started. And so after a certain number of years, we started paying out that reserve. And so that upper line is basically the 2.97% plus the reserve that was being paid out, so that by the end of the measure, it was a zero balance. So actually, what the operators got was that upper orange line. The black dotted line is the original Measure J projection. So that's the revenues that we expected when the voters voted on this, the revenue that we would get. Then came the recession. So the blue line is the actual program revenues that we've received through this last fiscal year. And the green line is our current projections in our strategic, our currently adopted strategic plan. So as you can see, I think the important thing to note here is that even currently, what we're seeing in the last... We're seeing a less steep slope in growth than even what our current strategic plan projects. So what'll probably happen is we'll do another revenue assessment when we do our next strategic plan, and you'll see that green line, you know, slope less steep. It'll probably flatten out just a little bit. You know, it's just trying to figure out when the next recession's going to come, if there's going to be another downturn, if there's going to be, you know, changes in the economy that boosts that. But so the blue line is, again, you know, the actual numbers that we've seen since the beginning of Measure J through this last fiscal year. Any questions so far? Probably, it's very confusing.
Laurie?
Yes, so just like with your, the original Measure J, the dash line, what happens if your current projections do not even out to maybe a lesser just significantly... Well, less than significant slope, and it actually drops below the blue line? Did you understand?
No.
Okay. So for example, you're making another projection with the green line, what doesn't actually happen is it actually drops below the blue?
It... Then it's lower. It's based on actual revenue that we receive. So the projection is only that, it's only a projection, it's not a guarantee of funds in any way.
Okay, so the next strategic plan, when is the adoption date of that?
It'll probably be in 2017, maybe early 2018.
Oh, okay. All right.
Yeah, we update it about every three years.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, I wanted to show you. So this is out just through '25, '26. But this next slide, I've cut out the Measure C part, and it looks at Measure J out through '33, '34. The reason you see that line all of a sudden bend down at the end and drop down is because in fiscal year '33, '34, Measure J is only there for three-quarters. So it started in the third quarter of 2009, 10, and so it ends after the end of the first quarter in '33, '34. So that's why you see that drop off in revenue. So this is the percentage of funds that go to the operators under Program 15. You can see that basically the blue bars are the 2.97%, that's the guarantee. And the orange bars are kind of what Measure J has put on the table that's new money. So it started that first year at 3.5%. It goes up at 0.1% until the end when it's at 5.9%. So that's the growth area as far as percentage-wise. Now, this slide shows the growth area from the finances. Besides the percentage growth, we've also got inflation. We've got real growth in the dollars. The sales tax dollars don't stay consistent every year. They're always... Hopefully, if the economy's good, they're always going up. If we have a recession, then there will be another dip in these dollars, and that'll adjust this curve. But the blue and the purple are Measure... They're Measure J to date of the actuals that we know. And then the orange and the yellow are the projections. The blue and the orange, the lower bars, are the guarantee that goes to the current Measure C recipients. And I guess I should point out that under Measure C, it's all the same recipients, except East Bay Paratransit was not included under Measure C as a recipient. They are included under Measure J as a recipient. So we had five recipients countywide under Measure C, and we have six now under Measure J. Lastly, I just wanted to talk a little bit about Program 20. This council doesn't make recommendations based on Program 20. We only do Program 15. Program 20 is only in two parts of the county, Central County and West County. Central County is 0.5% annually, and West County is 0.65% annually. That is in the expenditure plan. Those two subregions wanted to put more money into paratransit services. East County and Southwest County did not, so that's why they don't have these additional expenditures. In West County, they... WIC-TAC has the... You know, they program those funds and make a recommendation to the authority, and the authority approves them. They have been taking those months and giving them to their operators in West County by formula, so the same operators that get Program 15. In Central County, the current RTPC there, TransPAC, has decided not to give County Connection anymore. They get Program 15, and what they're doing is giving their funds to other cities like Walnut Creek that provide senior transportation services, and also to nonprofit organizations like Debbie's organization that provide transportation for people that are in their programs that are taking trips off of the public ADA service and helping, you know, empty seats in the public ADA service. So that's how... And they're also doing some volunteer driver programs, helping to fund some of those programs. So that's how Central County is choosing to spend those funny... Those funds, yeah.
Go ahead. So when you have this partnership in place where you have a nonprofit that's actually assisting, you know, with paratransit rides, is there... I don't know how long we've been doing that, but is there some type of statistics that we can look at that shows that this is really working out, that the seniors and the disabled are really being served, well-served?
Yeah, how it's typically done is they do a grant application process. They do it on a competitive basis, and that goes through TransPAC. So like in your case, if you chose to do this, it would go through WIC-TAC. And they... So they have to give them a series of information about the clients that they serve. Most of them are... Well, in Debbie's program, for instance, her clientele would be... If she wasn't providing the service, they would be riding County Connection. And they would be descriptive services, and they make, put a lot of impact on the public service. And they're not getting a good trip because they're caught in the same, you know, hour-and-a-half ride. Debbie can probably explain it better than me. Or, you know, those same timeframe windows that are associated with the ADA, where she can schedule those trips better. So I do keep statistics that kind of give us the same comparison of cost per trip and all that kind of stuff. But again, sometimes it's what TransPAC says they want to monitor with regard to those services. Some of the... Some of the... I'm thinking of volunteer driver programs. There's actually two programs. One of them's fairly restrictive. It's to medical appointments only. And, you know, people have to meet certain criteria, so it's kind of non-ADA-related. There's also a local private... Ross Moore provides bus service within their community and provides service into Walnut Creek, and so they get a small amount of funds to help support that service. So we do keep statistics on that, and are, you know, do monitor it to make sure it's, you know... And also, it's done under the full support of County Connection. County Connection says, you know, "We're not going to ask for that money. It needs to go to the community and to these community services."
So what I'm hearing you say, though, is that they are not providing... Or some of the... Some of them, I think, probably are, but some of them are not providing, say, to people in power wheelchairs, like the volunteer programs. My guess is, don't offer service... You know, when you... When the program... When part of the program provides it only to part of the group by disability, you might say, or lack thereof, whatever, then that, like people in power wheelchairs, for example, would get underserved. Because if the money had gone into some other group, let's say, even County Connection, at least they would have been able to be in the pool for getting service. Whereas when you have volunteer drivers do it in sedans, they just simply don't get a ride.
Right, but remember that these funds can be used for either ADA or non-ADA services, as long as they're seniors or people with disabilities.
Right, but when the money... If all the money were siphoned into volunteer rides, for example, then people in power wheelchairs would get no rides at all. So when you do your statistics, the question I would wonder about is, you know, are the harder-to-serve people, the people who have a harder time in the regular system, getting underserved in this system at an even higher rate? You wouldn't... Because you wouldn't want that to happen.
Well, I'll let Debbie make that argument with you, but I would say...
Well, I don't think Debbie needs to, because I think her vehicles are wheelchair-equipped.
No, I understand, but...
I think she's what I'm talking... She's not what I'm talking about.
There's... I think there's people being served under the volunteer driver programs that can't even get on a paratransit vehicle because they're too frail. And they need door-through-door service. So that's the argument that you would hear from the other, you know, people that are receiving some of these funds.
Josh, sorry.
Just as a quick question, maybe a...
Just as a quick question, maybe a day late and dollar short, but with the subregional dispensing, I, I know that there's a greater and greater growing service need for East County at this point because it's one of the most affordable places for housing. So, you have folks, more, you know, more group homes, congregate living settings, independent living settings, just as, as a function of cost. Is there any way to, to have some set-aside funds to enrich services in that region?
It would require East County, it would require the East County subregion to change their priority and change their, you know, funding allocation. The problem they're going to have is Highway 4 and E-BART were their priorities, and the money's pretty much spent at this point. So, it will be difficult, it would be difficult for them to have funds to prioritize. I mean, there could be some, but they'd be small, you know, smaller amounts.
And we, and they have less, I mean, if people live in a more urban environment, there are more opportunities for getting around. So, I would, as a, as a disabled person, I would never, I would never encourage a person, say, in a wheelchair. I would always tell them, never live in a place, you know, like that, or never live in Central County, because you can't get around on the bus at all on, you can't get around on the Sunday. And I'm not sure about East County service, but in Central, it's the same. You can't get around at all on Sunday. So, you'd, so I would argue the opposite, that it's the least disabled-friendly part of our county. And people should, you know, if I were talking to, and I have done this, talked to people, where should you live? Well, you should live in a place where you can get around, not where somebody should be rewarded for building practices that produce environments that are, don't work.
And, and Madam Chair, I think we're speaking the same language, but in using different mindsets to look at it. The, the problem is, when we're talking about folks with very significant service needs, the, the businesses that provide the services will go where the, the cost of doing business is the least. And we're finding, at least in the developmental disabilities world, we have the highest number of folks in the county, actually, that live in Antioch, believe it or not. Antioch has the highest number of folks from my community that are in the county.
It would seem to me that you would want to do something to encourage people to live in, you know, places that are better suited to, to their disability. I mean, I personally, I, I, I wouldn't live in a place, I couldn't get around, I, I would just, I would just die, I guess. I don't know. You know, I wouldn't be able to get around at all. So, you know, you, anyway. Sorry for the lecture.
Well, Madam Chair, I'm not going to die. I'm not going to die. But I, but I, I live in Antioch. And to your point about can't get around on Sundays and Saturdays, if I may, to, you know, beyond certain distances, because we're limited on Saturdays even. But Peter, your argument, to her point of seniors who have these extenuating circumstances is, well, that may be true, and, and I know that it is true, but that still does not change the fact that people in wheelchairs still need the service. And we are discriminating against them in the wheelchair when they're not included in this pool of money in these areas. And I've, I've had the argument in Antioch for seven years now that I think it's totally unfair, this one-mile rule that Dala Wright lives under on Sundays, that prevents me from getting any services on Sunday.
I can't, I can't comment on your last statement because I don't operate the service, or we don't operate the service out there, but I, I guess I wasn't clear. So, we don't, people, organizations who provide services to people in wheelchairs are not allowed to apply for this money. It's a competitive process. There's a call for projects. If there's organizations that focus on providing services for people in wheelchairs only, they're completely eligible to submit a grant and, you know, be chosen to, to get those funds. It's, it's just a matter of who applied. So, it's not a matter of people who are eligible and not eligible.
Josh?
But again, Peter, I think it's only for Central and Quest County.
Did you want to speak, Debbie? Sorry. Well, I could not tell it with your hand down, sorry.
So, a number of things. The first being that Josh started his first comment with, am I, or question with, am I, but is it a day late and a dollar short? Yes. So, everything that we looked at here related to the expenditure plan for Measure J was decided upon in 2005, four, five, when Don Freitas was the chair of the Transportation Authority, and he was also the head of TransPlan, which is the eastern portion of the county's Regional Transportation Planning Committee that made decisions about how that money was going to be spent, the local portion of that money. I advocated vociferously at that point in time to have more money for senior and disabled transportation, and it fell on deaf ears. If you're not at the table, you're not on the menu, or however you want to phrase that. You could go back and lobby to have that money reallocated or looked at the percentage locally. It's a massive process. And as Peter explained, that money has basically been spent by borrowing money for E-BART and Highway 4 that, when those tax revenues come in now, are being paid to a debt service, more or less. I'm making it simple, but it's something along those lines. So, it's not like there's a whole ton of money sitting in there. The bigger issue that we have, I think, as, or another issue that we have in wanting to provide appropriate accessible transportation for everybody who needs it, whether they're in a wheelchair or whether they're able physically or not, or it's an intellectual disability, or whatever the case may be, Alzheimer's disease, you name it, there's any number of reasons people can't take regular fixed route transportation, is that it is inextricably linked to the Americans with Disabilities Act, which gives the transportation provider the authority to say, we're only going to provide this service within a three-quarter-mile radius or a mile radius. They can say a mile and a half. They can say three miles. They can say whatever they wish it to be, as long as the minimum is three-quarters of a mile. And that's tied to whatever they're providing on the fixed route. That has to do with federal legislation. It's not, it's not an arbitrary thing. And the problem is that this form of transportation is not funded. So, the Americans with Disabilities Act is a non-funded mandate that tells the provider, you have to provide this ride that costs you, I'm going to make up this number, but it's not far-fetched, forty dollars per trip to provide, and you can only charge eight dollars for it because that's twice what your fixed route rate is. So, there's something that happens here that makes the providers unable to provide this service. It's, it's, it's an entirely screwed-up system. So, we have a lot of things about it which need to be fixed, but I don't think we're going to get Congress to act on changing those aspects of the Americans with Disabilities Act, which force us out of the opportunity for transit. I think what we need to do is for, focus more locally on what we can do to bring in money to provide, the providers, remove some obstacles for them and bring in more money so that they can do things above and beyond what the minimal ADA requirements state. And part of that is having a powerful paratransit coordinating council that is advising the, the Transit Authority on issues pertaining to paratransit and accessible transportation, what the needs are of the rider, so that we don't end up in situations like this where we have tax measures coming to the table and our voice is not represented. But now, sorry, that soapbox is done. The next one is, in Central Contra Costa County, we were successful in advocating for more money to be dedicated locally to senior and disabled transportation. That's what it was called at the time. Now, we're calling it accessible transportation. That pot of money that goes out is available for anybody to apply for it. I apply for it, and I get money, and I have wheelchair-accessible vehicles. But I'm only providing it to people who are coming to and from our Adult Day Healthcare Program and Concord residents who are low-income, who are stuck in their low-income housings because they can't afford that four dollars per trip for a paratransit to get their groceries. The city of Concord is not providing them a ride. We are, some random nonprofit organization in Pleasant Hill, because they're stuck at home. So, we get that money so that we can provide that service to them because their city is not. Pleasant Hill is, Walnut Creek is, some of the other cities are. They don't have to. They choose to. And then there are volunteer drivers. So, what Peter said is absolutely true. So, in the case of Mobility Matters, that's a nonprofit organization that's providing volunteer drivers, that's providing rides throughout the county. They don't take the rides off of the fixed route, or, I mean, off of County Connection Link, for example, like we do. Everybody who I drive has to qualify, to and from Adult Day Healthcare, has to qualify for County Connection Link. But that's not true with Mobility Matters, because the people who ride Mobility Matters can't be able to take another form of transit. That's their part in the system of transportation. So, just like you go into a hospital, you're not going to see a nephrologist if that's not who you need, you're going to go to the podiatrist, or you're going to go to whoever you need to see. So, there are different parts in the transportation care continuum. That volunteer driver program happens to focus on people who are too frail to take paratransit. So, there's a whole range of services that we need to be able to look at and provide to those in need. And that's the end of my soapbox.
Sure.
Is it true that the ADA rules and regulations have not changed in 27 years?
Yes. Well, related to this-
No, that's not true.
Related to this transportation piece, it has not changed related to paratransit.
That wasn't the way he stated it.
Okay. It, it has not related to paratransit.
So, my understanding of the people who wrote, of what the people who wrote the ADA were thinking is, a lot of people didn't even want there to be a paratransit. So, it was kind of like the people who thought there shouldn't be one and the people who thought there should. And the rules they developed were, were a result of a compromise between the people who wanted it and the people who didn't it, and they were all from the disability community. It's what I was told. Okay. So, we were commenting, did you have more in your presentation? Okay. Are there more comments? You're afraid to, huh? Okay. And I'm sorry if I'm particularly upset this weekend. I went to the Democratic Convention and spent about half of it trying to get a ride to my hotel so I wouldn't get mugged late at night. So, even when there's a, and that's because they didn't get, have wheelchair-accessible lifts on their transportation, in case you're interested. But anyway, so, a lot of the problems that we had way back then still exist. Are we ready to move on to the next item? Okay, great. So, we will. Item number eight, which is the 2017, 18 claims, and I bet that item seven that we just covered in great detail, and thank you for a great report, Peter. I thought it was a great overview of the whole, what-
Thank you.
Where we have been and where we, where we now are. Great segment, a sec, lead-in to item number eight. I don't, did you intend that?
Yep.
Good.
I intended that.
So, why don't we do that, then?
So, I'll just, I, I'm not going to go in great detail on this report. I think you can see in the, in the staff report, a lot of information. I will make a correction. I said on my last item that it was, this year was 4.6 percent, but I see here that it's 4.3 percent. So, we won't be at 4.6 percent for another three years. There's current, so, we are projecting $86,500,000 in total Measure J sales tax revenue for fiscal year 17, 18. 4.3 percent of that is $3,719, 17, 19,500. And again, that is, that amount is countywide. That would be split up by formula in the expenditure plan to all of the subregions, which you can see on page 14, the percentages that that goes by. The claim forms were sent out in late March, early April. They were sent back to me April 22nd. The claims, the Claims Review Subcommittee met on, oh, May 3rd, May 2nd, and we reviewed the claims that we received. Josh, Vicky, Rita, Kim, is that it? There was one more? I guess that was it. Were there to review them. Lots of good questions. And I will open the floor up to any of the Subcommittee members that were there that might want to speak to any of the issues or, or give their thoughts on the meeting. Seeing that, oh.
I'll just say it's a great opportunity for anyone on PCC to, to really consider doing this. I got roped in my first year of doing it from Debbie. She pushed me. She didn't rope me, she pushed me into it. And it's a wonderful opportunity to hear about the culture of our, our local community in regards to ridership and, and services provided. And it's a great bridge into making connections and addressing current issues. So, like, the, the presentation today was a direct result of hearing from multiple providers that we have stuff, we have these unfulfilled needs. Maybe our community can come together and help with that. So, thank you, guys and gals.
I, I will say on that, on that last issue, I think it was Vicky and Janet Bilbus had mentioned the travel training program that you're doing in West County, and that a survey was done, but there wasn't really funds or ability to kind of do a follow-up on after people rode for a while, you know, what, what kind of issues they were having. And that's when Josh said, hey, you know, I can provide potentially through this hirable, hire-able program, some, some folks that are, could be interns and paid by the state, doesn't cost you anything, to kind of do some of that follow-up stuff and, and get an idea of maybe how the travel training program can be adjusted because it was missing something. You know, a lot of people were having trouble in a certain area. So, that's one of the collaborative things that can, that can come out of that. Is there any more comments from any of the?
I was, I volunteered to be a member of that committee. However, the committee met at 9:00 AM in the morning, and it's physically impossible for me to make a, a meeting that early in the day. In fact, my day does not start until about 11:00 AM. In order for me to make a 9:00 AM meeting, say, in Walnut Creek here, in this building, Dala Wright, I would have to get up at 3:00 AM in order to get Dala Wright in time to get me to the board states, or I, to make the transfer with County Connection at the board station. So, that, I, that's why I was not available for that meeting.
Yeah. And, and I apologize for that. I mean, typically, it's, you know, there's, there's seven claims and it just, you know, at 45 minutes, you know, per interview and, you know, time between for people to use, you know, the facilities and stuff. It's just kind of an all-day process. But maybe we can, you know, and it's easier to get everybody together at once than to break it up over two or three days. But maybe we can do it by conference call or video something, or, you know, maybe there's, let me think about that. Maybe there's other ways to do it that make it so we don't all have to, I mean, technology's better now than it was five years ago, and maybe there's things we can do that we don't have to get everybody all in the same room at the same time.
I think I also volunteered and was told that other people could do it.
Right. So, I mean, we had, we had-
The way they set it up, maybe if, what was, if it was sort of the opportunity, you know, we need to put forward the time slots when it might be done for people to pick from, if they were a little more flexible, rather than all being the, sort of the same, but on a different, with this one factor changed or something, that makes it really hard to make a, you know- That makes it really hard to make, you know, like, I'm not, I'm using this as a different example, but sometimes people say, can we meet at 9 o'clock in the morning on day one? Oh, can you meet at 10 o'clock in the morning on day one? Well, they're kind of the same variation. So if you can, you can do it, you can do it. And if you can't, you probably couldn't do either one. So there needs to be variety. So for example, what would have solved the problem would, to have a variety that wasn't so early in the day. And to ask people who couldn't make it, why they couldn't make it. And if you find out if it's for a reason like that, then, you know, you know how to alter the choices. But if you don't, if, if, if it isn't brought up.
I mean, so we had two problems this year. Number, we had eight volunteers and we couldn't have eight people there. And I didn't think of this at the time, because if we have eight people there, that's a quorum and we would have to have it as a public meeting, public notice brown act meeting. The second is, you know, we had eight people, we had a three-day window or a four-day win, you know, it had to be one of four days because I get the applications, got to have time to kind of process them, and then we got to have time to put them in the agenda. So at that time, we hadn't moved the meeting yet and didn't know that we were going to necessarily move it a week, or would have had more options. So, and, and, you know, it's a seven-hour, six-hour meeting for the most part. So you either start at nine or you start at 10 because you don't want to go until 7:00 o'clock at night, or we're going to not have people available either. So there's a lot of criteria that have to be met in a short period of time. So we just put it out there and the day that we had the most people is the day that we went with. So like I said, maybe, maybe next year we can try and think of some ways that we can get participation, you know, without requiring this traveling and all that kind of stuff for people. So we'll look at that.
Go ahead, Michael.
And it doesn't speak to your issue, because I know that you have to take certain forms of transportation to get to meetings. But in your particular case, wouldn't try Delta Transit, do what they did like they did today, so you wouldn't have to worry about going? That they would pick you up with dial-a-ride and take you directly to whatever the meeting? That would certainly, in combination with what we've been talking about, compress the hours for, say, a 10:00 AM meeting.
And that may be where I made the mistake, because I did not contact Deanna. I'm sure Deanna Falee would have done that with me.
I would definitely look into that for you.
Deanna was on the subcommittee too, and she didn't even make it, so.
I think this points to one of the issues we have.
Okay.
Okay, so then, the other, the other issue that we have to talk about, or that I, that I need to let you know is, we did not get a claim from the city of Richmond. Lori, thank you for coming today. You can probably explain better. The city is taking to their city council meeting tomorrow, an item to talk about some, for lack of a better term, restructuring they want to do of their service, and they need to get direction from the council to do that. They didn't feel comfortable submitting a claim not knowing the service they're going to be providing. I agreed with them completely, you know, you know, not going to take the money and give it to one of the other agencies, you know, submit a claim that's accurate. And then when you do, we can process that claim. And at that point, you know, if, if it's, if everybody's fine with it, we can, you know, allocate the funds. So I do anticipate a claim from, from the city of Richmond sooner, probably rather than later. I mean, I don't think it's going to be three months. It's probably going to be more like a month or six weeks. All depends on what happens at the city council tomorrow, I guess we should say. And I'll let Lori speak to that more if she is comfortable doing so.
Well, Peter, you did such an eloquent job of summarizing that. Thank you. So it won't be too long. I just wanted, for the city of Richmond, we really want to be transparent when we fill out the claim form. We want a service that's going to work for all of our disabled and senior population. And at this point in time, it's not working. You know, our seniors are very dissatisfied with the service because we have to cancel a lot of rides and, or we have to just not, or provide limited ridership not within our projected or our promised territory or geographic area. We're not making those trips like we should. We've had a lot of seniors to call and they've been complaining. And this is primarily due to the lack of, of, of drivers. Now, a lot of our drivers, we have a limited staff to begin with. And so when drivers are out for one reason or another, either they're on vacation, and in this case, it's primarily due to long-term disabilities. And so we don't have any drivers, to be honest with you. So why would we fill out the claim form and ask for revenue just to pay one or two drivers or provide, or continue to provide an inadequate service? So we've had this conversation with CCTA as well as WIC-TAC, West Country Coastal Transportation Advisory Committee. And we agreed that we would complete the claims form, claim form, once we came up with a viable program that we felt would, will work for our seniors and disabled persons. And I would love for the committee to really agree with that. And if anyone wants to make a, make a recommendation of some sort, that we turn in the claim form once we have a viable program and service in place that, number one, our council agrees to, something different from what we have going on now. And we'll submit the claim form then. I can't guarantee that it will be within a month. I'm hoping that it will, really is contingent upon what our council members do tomorrow evening. But I just think that, like with any other type of funding source, this is taxpayer money. If we were receiving a grant from an agency, we would want to be transparent with that as well, to make sure that we're within the guidelines of that grant. So the same thing applies here. I'd be happy to take any questions if you have any.
Mallory?
What does city staff recommending to the council?
Well, we're recommending that the council eve, we gave them four options to look at. One is that they allow us to contract the services out completely. The second one is that we have a combination of, we reduce our staff to maybe retain some staff that we're able to retain, that may look like one or two staff members. And then do, you know, have, so retain those staff and then still contract out. The third option is that we work with El Cerrito or even San Pablo, we do a combined type of service. And the fourth one is, or working with, this is still like on a contract concept, but working with maybe an Uber, Lyft type of concept where they do non-ambulatory rides and then we handle the ambulatory rides with the few staff that we have that are able to drive. So, or, you know, have council come up with some, giving us some direction in terms of other alternatives that they can look at for services.
What would be your vehicles in that mode? What type, what type, I mean?
Well, I mean, we were, you know, it depends on what kind of service we offer, but if we decide that we want to do ambulatory rides.
I actually meant in terms of the, the one where you contract out for ambulatory and-
Oh, right. You mean the vans, the vans that we have?
Yeah.
Well, we have to take a look at the, we have to take a look at the grant application that we have. And I know that that required that we put a lot of miles on those vehicles. We're not able to do that. So I don't know what we would do with that. I have to take a look, I have to take a really close look at what that, the grant terms of those vehicles entail and decide what we do with that.
What I was kind of wondering, don't you have, I may, I may not know what you have, but the, don't you have minivan, modified minivans?
That's what I'm referring to.
Is that all you have?
We have one bus that will accommodate for like fast-speed drivers. But then we have, that's the only one that we have, and then we have the minivans.
So you're, so the minivans, my understanding is they, from riding in them, they don't work very well for people in wheelchairs either, so.
Well, our paratransit coordinator tends to think different, but we do have a lot of people who are not satisfied with those vehicles. And then on top of that, we have drivers, that's one reason, that's why our drivers, from what I'm hearing, and I can't verify this, but one reason is why our drivers are hurt, because they've been trying to lift wheelchairs, one, the one wheelchair that can't fit on those buses, or two, that doesn't have a lift or something like that. So they are more prone to more accidents and things like that.
Doesn't have a ramp either?
I, I think it does have the ramp. Yeah, I think it does have a ramp.
Okay, because I would-
But they'll do some lifting still. It's something with the lifting that they have to do, that's why they've been hurting themselves. And I, we're exploring that.
I, I understand that you don't, I hear you say you don't know for sure, and I accept that 100%.
Yeah, a lot of these things are still-
What I was, just a little concerned about is an alternative that would put wheelchair riders into the situation that may already be causing part of the problem.
Well, I can tell you this, that once we decide on which recommendation the council will go with, then we'll look at all the things that we have in place, whether we're able to retain them or work from that, or whether we just need to just shut the whole program down and just contract it out. I don't know, we have to receive direction from council and then we'll go from there. I'm not answering your question really, but that's all I have.
You're answering, you're saying what you are able to say and that's all we can ask.
Okay, well, thank you for understanding.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Josh, sorry.
I just have a technical question related to the situation for Peter. So in the case of a jurisdiction that either has a lack of or a lapsed claim, are they able to back bill for the time that the lapse occurred or the time that no service was, were provided? And if they're not, does CCTA have the ability to send out to RFP that amount to maybe ask for some innovative approaches to meeting need?
No, the way the, so, so, the way the program's set up in the expenditure plan is that it's an allocation of a percentage. It's not based on expenses or, well, it's based on services happening. But, so if they shut down the service, you know, that's, if they shut down the service and then they restart it, I mean, we'd have to, I don't know. That's something that I don't think was anticipated, that's new territory. If they keep some level of service on the street, you know, that the funds are, I guess to answer your question is, I don't know. It's new territory.
Let me help you with that a little bit, Peter, because with our conversation, our meeting with CCTA and WIC-TAC staff is that we are still, we haven't shut down, we're still operating as best we can. But the way we will do this to keep funds rolling in is that we will have a follow-up conversation with CCTA after our council meeting. And we'll let them, we will let them know the level of service that we're offering to decide if that warrants the entire amount, or if we need to cut back on some of that based on the availability of drivers and the number of rides that we're actually being able to accommodate. Does that make sense? And I don't know how that will really look until we, until we have a follow-up conversation in terms of what CCTA will want, or if we're still able to bill the entire amount. Because I'm sure there's other jurisdictions in West County and Central County that's not being, you know, who, who are not probably meeting their goal. But, you know, for the city of Richmond, we just want to make sure that we don't have seniors and disabled persons coming to us complaining that they're not getting their rides or this continual cancellations. And we're billing CCTA for this, just to kind of retain, I hate to say it, but just to retain staff and not really offering adequate and efficient service.
Right, so I think the one place where I'd like to get more direction from the council, if it doesn't happen tomorrow, maybe it can happen later, is that when, when the whole thing was set up back under Measure C, the city of Richmond took on a service area larger than the city of Richmond. They took on El Sabrante and Kensington and, and North Richmond. And I think Charlie has part of the unincorporated area. I think you and Richmond kind of worked out a line. So the county's a little bit concerned that, you know, some of the county residents aren't getting the service that Richmond's getting paid for. So, you know, that would be the one place where if, if we went back in and the, and the city said, look, we're just going to serve Richmond. And, you know, maybe one of the other providers, El Cerrito or San Pablo or, or West Cat would be willing to take on some of those, those county areas. And, you know, then we could re, you know, we would look at reallocating some of those funds. It would definitely stay in West County for West County residents. And it would be, you know, if Richmond wants to, you know, just tighten the, you know, tighten the service area down a little bit, then that's something that we would look at doing.
And you know what, and I have to speak on Richmond's behalf, and I can, because I've been numerous meets with the city manager, and he and I both have talked about, you know, this issue. And if it were up to the city, we are taking on more than, we're bodying up for more than we can choose. Is that, is that the same? Okay. So, so basically, yeah, I think that that would be an option that we probably could discuss with our, in our city council meeting tomorrow night, that, you know, when the service was first established, I'm not sure if that was a geographic area that it covered since '07, since its establishment. But certainly, what we are to do is that we're not able to handle that geographic area with our limited staff. Not saying that we cannot do it through a, you know, a contract with Lyft and some other providers that we can do some contracting with. Our city council members and our vice, one of our city council members and our vice mayor, we had a conversation with them, and they don't want to lose any of the dollars, I can tell you that now. So they're going to definitely come, definitely come up with something that could work for the geographic area that we currently have. I don't know what that would look like, but I know that they, they do want to see some changes. They do want to see some more proactive strategies on the city staff, probably in terms of what we can do. But I don't know what that would look like until tomorrow evening. But I'll definitely keep you informed, and we can definitely keep this committee informed.
Well, you know, and I know you had, Mallory, can I, can I just interject on that comment? The one thing that concerns me about another jurisdiction taking over a part of the jurisdiction outside of, you have outside of Richmond, is that having the vehicles to serve it, you know? And, and the problem to me looks like the vehicles that you have are, are not great, are not great for the purpose. So there, I don't know if there could be part of a solution that got rid of those vehicles and replace.
Well, all of that, Janet, will definitely be looked at.
Yeah, I mean, it could be, you know, I mean, you can sell vehicle, right, I'm sorry, not you personally. One can sell vehicles at least sometimes, and I don't know any more than you certainly about the contracts under which you have got them, but the, and then replace them with vehicles that would serve the purpose better. So it would seem to me like, you know, as you're doing it, you'd want to have that thinking about what those kinds of solutions could be.
Oh, definitely. I think what is timely for the city of Richmond is that we're right in the process of working on the transportation mobility management plan. And in that plan, we plan to address this very issue that we're dealing with concerning a paratransit. So I'm hoping that that plan through the consultants that we pay a lot of money to would be the answers to this problem that we're having. You raise a very valid point, Janet, in terms of the vehicles. We're going to look at everything, everything from equipment to staff to everything in terms of the way this program is now trying to operate. And then we'll decide at that point, what's best, you know, to turn the vehicles in, keep a few of them, kind, at least the amount of we're able to do that, whatever it takes on our part to make it a successful program for our disabled and seniors persons.
Okay. Mallory?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mallory?
My question is, was the Measure C funding your only funding source for the system? Or were general funds used to supplement whatever service you had on the street?
General funds also used. General funds were also used, and that's the problem, that's the one, what we're dealing with. The city could no longer, you know, with all the things that's going on with the economy, the city can no longer afford to pay out of this general fund, because those costs have really escalated for the retention of staff, for the retention of the operations and the services. And so, I mean, escalated from 300 to now close to 500,000. So the city has a real concern about that. If they cancel those general funds, which is what they cannot afford to pay, then we cannot afford to operate the program just with the Measure J funding, not, not the way it's existing now.
And just, just a follow-up, what is the name of the consulting firm that you've hired to develop your mobility management?
Oh, that is Nelson Nygaard.
Madam Chair, I think I need to interject. Our attorney would tell us we're way off track on this agenda.
Okay.
Okay. It's not considered under the status of the-
No, we were talking about the claims, and now we're talking about the service and a plan and all kinds of different stuff.
Okay, so we were talking, I thought what we were talking about was lack of a claim- claim was what we were, which I thought was covered.
Well, the item is to approve the claim.
Actually, okay.
Just, just to clarify, just to clarify for Mallory, it's a West County study, it's not just city Richmond. All of the West County operators are, are participating in it. So on behalf, the, the, city of Richmond is being proactive and not waiting for that study to happen. They're trying to get out ahead of this thing and make sure that things are made. But ultimately, I think the idea here is we will get a claim from the city of Richmond and we can put the subcommittee together and we can practice, you know, maybe doing it by phone call or something. I hate to have everybody come in here just for, to look at one claim, you know, and, and we can review it that way and, and take it from there. I just didn't want to hold up the rest of the claims, I wanted to get them to the authority and get them approved so that we could get that allocation role starting and then when we get the city of, of Richmond's, we can, we can take that.
To do one claim, you don't need all day, so it shouldn't be.
Right, it'll be very simple, yeah.
And then, Peter, as a matter of clarification, the mobility plan that I'm talking about is separate from the county, is, is a, is a separate mobility plan that the city is, has hired Nelson Nygaard to do. The first mile, last mile transportation strategic plan.
So.
So I guess what, you know, based on the, the claims that we received, I, I think based on what I witnessed at the, at the meeting, that the, the committee was, was comfortable sending those claims forward to the authority, it would go through the planning committee and then the full authority. So I think that would be the recommendation from staff and the subcommittee to make a motion to send the existing claims forward for approval from the board.
I thought I heard you say subcommittee, you mean the PCC, right? Make the motion?
The PCC Subcommittee is asking the PCC to make the motion to send the existing claims onto the authority.
So we need a person to make the motion, I believe, right? So we have a volunteer?
A point of order.
Okay, sure.
I'm on the board of directors of Tri Delta Transit as an alternate, am I eligible or should I recuse myself from?
My understanding is, it's, you, you just go ahead.
You're just making a recommendation.
Okay.
It, it doesn't matter, I think. My, that's what my understanding is, if we said that that was, you know, I think that's.
You're not approving the claims, you're recommending that the claims move forward to the authority, they're the ones that actually approve the claims.
And people there are in that seat too, position too, being involved, so in fact, that's how they get there, in some cases, I think. Yeah. Debbie?
Can I make a motion?
Please.
That we approve the recommendation of the subcommittee of the PCC?
You want to state it?
In moving forward, the claims, the existing claims.
Submitted by?
Submitted by the seven, how many were there? Eight operators, six operators.
Okay.
Can, we have a friendly amendment to that? Just to add that Richmond's claim will be reviewed after, I don't know the language.
Why don't we make that a separate motion?
Oh, okay.
That'll make it easier to say.
Okay.
Okay, okay, so you made your motion, there's a second. Okay, any further discussion on the motion? So the maker, Debbie made the motion, Michael seconded it. Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any objections, any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Now, let's, let's go on to that and then you want to tell us what, well, how can we best word for what she was?
Well, I don't, I don't think it's necessary to make big action on it. I think when we get your claim, or, I mean, I guess you can ask the PCC to, you know, that you will be submitting a claim and to review it at that time. I mean, that's really all they have the authority to do.
Okay, so we will, so that we'll submit a claim, but it will be a different claim other than what we've had in the past.
Correct, yeah, yeah.
Okay, I just want that language in there. So then the city of Richmond will be submitting a different approval, some, I guess I could put this out there, that the city of Richmond will submit a claim within the next three months that shows a viable program that CCTA would agree to prior to its approval.
Clarify CCTA, when, when I would, I can't say CCTA, the authority would agree to the claim, I mean, they're going to have to review.
Okay, no, not the, the committee.
We agree to commit, we agree to accept the claim and review it.
Okay.
That's, you know, a different claim than you've done in the past, I think is the language you're looking for.
So somebody needs to make that motion unless you want to be the one making it, either way.
Listen, listen.
That's a motion, right, Peter? We can make, okay.
Did everybody get the motion?
Some, we need to make a motion, if, if anyone's willing.
Could someone besides me make?
I'll move it.
Okay, thank you, you have to make it, make it for me. I'm, I can't say it again, I just said I moved it.
Okay, so let me see if I can state it. I think the motion, your motion says that the PCC will review the claim to be submitted by Richmond in the next three months. Did I get it close enough?
Now, our funds, funds, well, funds are pretty much frozen because until we submit that, we can't.
How about if we, how about we, we've moved these claims, how about at our next meeting, which is two months from now? You have a better timeframe as to when you think the claim, unless you think you're going to get it to us before.
Um, it probably won't be before then.
Okay, so let's address this, we'll put it on the agenda for that next meeting, we'll see where you're at and we'll address it then.
Oh, that's fair.
Okay. Okay, then that ends the motion, which actually didn't have a second. Okay, so with that, we, I believe are ready to move on to the next item on the agenda, which I've lost here, there it is.
Janet.
Uh-huh.
I have to leave because Vicki's leaving.
Okay, so there's a Service Review Advisory Committee report. There was not a lot on the agenda that pertained to Contra Costa County. There was a report on the pair transit claim to be submitted to the Alameda County Transportation Commission as part of its application for what in Alameda County are called Measure B and Measure BB funds and that passed. And there were some small changes made to the SRAC, that's the name of the group.
Make your computer easier to use.
I would love to make my computer easier to use, but usually I have to turn it on first. I guess this one has a theory for a friend. Anyway, I think that's about it, especially in light of the hour. And so is there any, we'll move on to the Senior Mobility Action Council Report, is there any report there?
I was not at the meeting this morning and Rita just left, so I don't know if there is.
Okay, she had to leave because her ride left. Okay, then the next item is future agenda items.
I think we have plenty.
Okay. That would be super. And that meeting will be held on July seventeenth of this year, two thousand and seven, at two p.m. here, noting that at two p.m. it is a time of the day when people can be here. Okay, Ms. Share, please.
Michael Dowjelly, I'm going to be starting up again at the Antioch Senior Center with my transit training program and we're going to be doing something to connect with a new smart rail system, Sonoma Marin, and we're going to be trying to use as many different agencies as possible. And because of the nature of this trip, I feel that I'm going to be encouraging people with disabilities to come along on the public transit portion of it because we're going to try to make it to see how many agencies we can go through and get over there because they're going to be opening sometime mid-June. So we're going to be working things out perhaps with West Cat and a few other different systems to get to San Rafael so that we can use the system going up and down. So hopefully by the July meeting, I'll have a report on that or I can give you some more information because they're supposed to do it mid-June through mid-July.
Why wouldn't they take Bart to Del Norte, which goes to San Rafael?
Right, what I'm going to try and do.
That's not through Charlie's service area.
Well, we're going to see if we can do as many agencies as possible to go up through West Cat. I'm going to, it's just, just a possibility.
Oh, that would take you all day.
Yeah, we're going to make an all-day out of it.
So.
One way.
As a follow-up to that, I was at a meeting, the, the CMA directors all get together monthly and so, you know, it went down three levels before one of us could go and I could go, so. And it was in Santa Rosa and they did a, the, the hosting agency always does a what's kind of going on in their county. And my understanding what was reported was that the smart directors are not, don't know when the service is going to start yet and they will be making an announcement June seventh as to when it will start. So you might be early if they are delayed, so just keep an eye on it.
Okay, any other things? Okay, with that, the meeting is adjourned and thank you all for being here.
Thanks for talking to you with the last one.
The what?
I don't want to, I don't want to.